Adir.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Cornell. Here. You all received a copy of the minutes of the meeting for October 28th. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
Do you have a second?
I will second that motion.
Will Crawford's...
Crawford.
Morrow.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Adir.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Cornell. Yes. Do we have reports from item number four for the inspector's report?
The only report I have is at some point in time, I think we all need to sit down and look at our zoning throughout the whole city. Some of the zones that we have are residential eight and ten and six, and per our zoning code, some of the percentages for lot coverages, they're not being met. Like, people who have residential eights, I have to restrict them down to what their actual lot size is, which is 7,500, because typically the lot sizes in Alva are 50 by 150, and half of them don't even meet 8,000 square feet. And there's a lot of zone tens around here that probably don't need to be zone tens and need to be eights, and then vice versa also. Some people have two lots and they're being restricted to 8,000 square feet. So, at some point in time, I think maybe we need to look into that a little bit more because I'm getting a lot more calls now, and I'm just going to start sending them to the planning commission's order to the variance board, trying to pass those variances off, and see if they can build bigger or receive more lot coverage. So, something I think we need to kind of look into because people are really starting to want to build now. So, and I'm having to hamper them based off of the percentages that they don't even have. So, that's about all I have from my report.
Is there a report from the city council?
Yeah, I'll report on it. It was crazy last Tuesday. So, we got a few things done. We tabled a few things till next month, just sort of didn't drag that meeting out. It's been longer than we already did, so it went pretty late. I don't know what time you guys finally get out of here. I had it around 10:45. Was it 3?
That sound about right?
Yeah.
Yeah. But otherwise, I think it was a productive meeting, you know. Spent a lot of time with the town hall. Went in the town, spoke, talked about, had their opinions about EMS, and it was a good, good, long meeting, but I think it was productive. So, anything else to add to that?
No, I think it was conversation that we needed to get started.
Any other comments? Okay. Item number five, discussion and action to approve a recommendation to the city council to change the zoning from residential general eight, or RGA, to general commercial, or CG, for the property located at 1331 Choctaw Street?
Yep, so you guys have there all the documentation regarding this rezone request. She's met all the requirements for it. So, she's basically wanting to rebuild the house and turn it into a coffee shop for high school students and stuff, and then she's also wanting to build a 30 by 40 shop, unless those have changed. But she's wanting to turn that into kind of a rental for birthday parties for kids and any other event that someone may want to hold. So, yeah, in order for all that to happen, it's going to have to be commercial, so.
I've had a question about the documentation we received.
Yeah.
The, these checkmarks?
Yes.
What does that mean?
Those are just all the residents in the 360 radius that I have to mail out.
You sent them at U.S.?
Yes.
Okay, and then these three over here?
Those are just making, I just double-checked those to make sure I resent them.
Okay. And then that slash mark next to there? I don't know why that bothers me, but I'm reading this one right here.
Oh, you gotta look at the CD.
Next to you. Yes, I do. Thank you very much.
Kind of had me going there for a minute.
I do.
That was just another check. I was just second, overlooking, double-checking my stuff, so.
Did you get letters back from any of these?
Yep, I got back almost all of them. I had one returned sender from James Gilchrist. So, guess he doesn't live at that address anymore.
I'll read that last part that I ever said.
You guys have it right there with you. That's exactly, I just changed.
Oh, it's back there. I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, you're totally fine. No, I think she was talking about your letters.
My letters?
Four and against.
Four and against, or?
Did you get any letters?
Oh, no, I have not received anything of that.
Okay, okay.
I just had people call and had their concerns on whether they needed to be here or not, basically. So, I say, well, if you have a concern about it, you can be here or support it however you wish, so.
Adam, okay.
One more.
Yeah.
Will you walk me through your checks? This is what was sent?
Yes, yes, all of these were sent out, and like I said, most of these other extra checks are just me double-checking, making sure I got them all sent.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. So, I don't need to imply anything with the dashes?
No, no. A lot of that's just me double-checking, make sure I had all my letters though, so.
Okay, Ms. Jackson, would you like to come and address?
Okay.
And explaining and...
Well, we just wanted to put up term "Jack's House." We've always called it "Jack's House" because it was Jack's Sports House. Just turn it into a coffee shop. Coffee seems to be the going thing. Fix it up where it was big enough to sell coffee and maybe snacks in there, and make it a big enough space where if kids did want to come to pick up a computer and do some just coffee time, study time, college kids, high school kids. It's not, not for little kids to be in there, but little kids don't use study. And then I just feel like Alva needs a place for birthday parties, and I just felt like with the pool going in, it might be a good place for, and when I say birthday parties, older people might want to have a birthday party, but my brain is thinking children's birthday parties. I'm not knocking the rec center, but once you've had a party or two at the rec center, I mean, it'd be nice to have something else to go to. When my kids were little, McDonald's actually had their little merry-go-round thing. I mean, there was some, we had options, so I just feel like it would be a good place. It'd be a reason for us to clean up that lot even better and make it look cool across from the city pool. That, that's our thought. And it would be a place where high school kids could eventually come over and get a snack if we ever could get to where we felt like selling hamburgers and fries in there would be a profitable thing, we would do it. Wouldn't be our first go-to, but it's not to say that we wouldn't immediately have some kind of snacks, like they could go just run across the street and grab something, so.
So, you provide the internet, internet for all?
A Wi-Fi system?
For the coffee shop?
Yes, where you could go in, and I'm not the internet whiz here, but yeah, we'd fix it where, I guess it would say free Wi-Fi, yeah. That seems to be the going thing where Haley, but Haley lives in Stillwater, so that's totally different, but it's weird to me that people would go and sit all day and do their work there, but they do, so.
You got a fast one, you probably have a lot more to say. A faster Wi-Fi.
Oh, oh, fast.
Yeah. A fast Wi-Fi.
Right, right, yeah.
Not a slow.
Well, I got a kid in my family that, Jared, he's a computer whiz, and he's, it didn't take much for me to run a computer. I just need to be able to run my phone, but I also am in tune to the fact that he'd be want to be in the fastest speed we could get. So, I mean, I'm not trying to, I want them to be able to do their work if they want to come there and hang out, so.
What would be your times open?
Um, you know, I don't really know. It wouldn't be, I mean, I would like to say on weekdays, you know, we'd be closed by nine, 10 o'clock. Weekends, depending on the traffic, if it, if there was a need, if I saw the kids, young kids wanting to come hang out, and not party, party, but they need a place to take somebody for a hamburger, take them to, we can eventually get some TVs in there, just something to go do. Weekends, you know, we might stay open till 11:00.
But if you don't have hamburgers, well, why other food?
Well, I don't have anything right now. I mean, but if we get the building put up, I mean, I wouldn't want to do it if we, if you said, okay, you could put a building up, but you can't add the hamburgers. I mean, that would not be, I mean, once you've been in and had a birthday party, right, it's, I mean, we need to go ahead to say yes if we do get the funding to do it all at once. When the building goes up, we'll put the vent and everything in there to make it legal from the get-go. We don't want to go, but if they say no, we don't, then I can't add that into my building, so, yeah.
Because that's a very huge expense.
Right, well, it's a big expense and it's a big project, but it's not near the project if you do it.
All at once.
Right, from the get-go.
Insurance?
How about, will I buy?
I know you'd have to have insurance, but what, uh, lift, well, how do I want the...
I mean, I'll get insurance, I'll get what I gotta have.
What you'd have to have?
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, yeah, we'd have to have the insurance, so. I mean, I don't want to...
Are you situated for parking?
I believe so. If we have to, we haven't got our brains set, I mean, it's a big lot. I think we have plenty of parking. If it means we have to back off 10 feet off the, of course, I'd have to get with the guy here, and he'd have to mark it off, you know, and say, okay, if they say yes, we can do it. I don't want to, I didn't put any money into it yet, because if we can't do it, I'm not going to spend money on an architect or parking planning and all that, but I think we'll have plenty of parking. I'm hoping we can fix it to where we can even just have a drive-through, possibly, you know. I mean, I think that lot, well, I don't know, I'm sure most of you have seen the lot. It's a big lot, and if we had to downsize somewhere to get the parking in there, we would, but I don't think, I don't think that's going to be a big issue.
Typically, it's one space per 300 square foot.
Yeah, I can't.
Separate, you know, each business would have its own parking.
On your request, you said outside play area for children?
Hopefully, like a playground, like a, like a...
But they won't be in the coffee shop?
The playground?
No, the kids.
Oh, they can have, it's, it's for everybody. The coffee shop's for everybody, yeah.
No alcohol?
No, right.
It's not like the kids would be restricted?
Right, there's no restrictions. The kids can come and go, it's not, I like kids, you know. But the birthday parties...
So, coffee, popcorn, soft drinks?
Right, absolutely, yes. Snacks, yes, yes. The coffee shop is not where the birthday parties will be held. I'm hoping the building will be a place, and off the building, we'll have a fenced-in area for the little kids where parents can not leave them unattended, but they're not going to run out in the street. I mean, I don't even want my little kids running out the street, so, but yeah, but it's not, they can go in the coffee shop.
Any other questions for Shelley at this point? Okay. Do I have any citizens? Okay, if you'll come up here and give us your name.
Thank you.
Beth, you need to state your name. Beth, state your name.
Just a minute, just a minute. My name is Beth Smith. I live at 1328 Flynn. I'm a mother and a grandmother, and so I want you to know I'm not against young people and children. I love them. But when school starts, I also work at the Cherokee Strip Museum, and when school starts, my yard and the yard at the museum is full of cups, pop cups, and candy papers and McDonald papers that I pick up. Now, before school started this year, I picked up two bags of them and took them to the school and asked if they could maybe remind the children not to throw trash in the yards, and they assured me it would not happen. It did. I'm still picking up things. I don't feel that our young people respect Alva as a city or our neighborhood, and I know young people don't think about things like that anymore. Also, some of my neighbors use the alley on 13th Street as their driveway. Several of them do, and so I'm wondering about the parking, if, if the new business is allowed to build. Also, we have several places for young people to have parties. We have the Runnymede, we have the Extreme, we have the sports complex, we have, and the museum has an annex. All of these places are available for young people. Also, we have a nice city park for them to be in. So, I hate to be a person that doesn't like to agree with Alva to grow, because I do want Alva to grow and I want us to prosper, but I don't particularly want it in my backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janet Shee, and I am Beth's neighbor to the back of the alley, and I also purchased my house from Shelley, so I will be right next door to the proposed event center. So, I'm going to reiterate a little bit of what Beth just stipulated in the fact that there are several event centers already available in Alva. The fairgrounds, the new event center that's under construction east of Alva, I know it's not accessible yet, the Runnymede, the Act One Building, the Methodist Church Youth Center, the Cherokee Strip Museum Annex, the Alva City Park has numerous pavilions that are free to the best of my knowledge, the rec center, the Extreme. We already have numerous places to have events. I'm a little concerned for sure, since this event center is going to be right next door to me and the coffee shop. That is a busy street that goes right past the swimming pool, and parking is at a premium, and I, I hope Shelley's right, that there's going to be ample parking there. And it does concern me about young children in a little playground area there, and if it's fenced in, that's great, but I don't know if it's going to be ADA compliant, which is handicapped accessible with restroom and sidewalks, something to consider. There's going to be health codes, permits, inspections, et cetera, et cetera, that would have to be looked into also. Also, the height of the building, I don't know, do you know how high your building's going to be, the 30 by 40, because I think there are codes that stipulate how high it can be?
I mean, we'd make it up to code. We can't build anything without the ADA or the, yeah, I can't do anything without...
All of that, yeah. I was hoping you were going to have a drawing tonight that kind of showed the layout and everything.
No, because I'm not spending any money until I know I can get a zone.
Yeah.
That'd be a waste.
So, bleeding, that leads on to coffee shops. When you look around Alva, and I haven't been here that long, but there are numerous coffee shops, coffee, drinks, food trucks. We have the Wicked Grind, we have Showtime Nutrition, we have three Mexican food trucks, Ricky's Sweets and Eats, we have other visiting food trucks that come on special occasions. I talked to Mr., I'm sorry, you're going to have to tell me again.
Adam.
Adam, today, because I read in the newspaper where there was going to be a section of the swimming pool that was going to be resurfaced specifically for food trucks, and so he, he confirmed with me that yes, that was true, but because of budgetary restrictions, part of that was not going to be resurfaced for the food trucks, and so I asked what side was it going to be, east or west? And he told me it was planned for the west side by the swimming pool. So, with that being said, and food trucks being allowed to park over there, I don't know how much business Shelley is actually going to have if they choose to, if the food trucks choose to come. So, that's another thing to think about. I'm concerned about the hours of operation, early in the morning, late at night, she's just stipulated it might be till 9:00 PM, possibly 11:00 PM on a weekend. Those are pretty late hours. I don't know if there's going to be, who the operator is going to be during that timeframe. I bought that property because it's close to the park, it's relatively quiet, it's close to the swimming pool. I like that house. You can see the sun come up, you can see the sun go down. I really like that, but I think that building's going to be like a problem for me, but that's a personal thing, so. With that being said, I'm also very deeply concerned about what this is going to do to property values and taxation. I mean, I already pay a lot in city taxes, property taxes, so I don't know if it's going to increase, decrease. I don't know. I don't know. I don't think any of us can answer that question, but I think that has a lot of bearing on whether you, you decide to grant this for the Jackson family or not. And also, once you zone it, general commercial, and there again, I don't have a complete definition of what general commercial means to Alva, Oklahoma. I've looked up several general commercial in neighboring towns in the state of Oklahoma. There are certain stipulations, you know, 10-foot rule, buffer zones, fences, you know, noise pollution. So, my concern here is if this venture fails as a coffee shop slash event centers, all of these things that Shelley's outlined, and if it fails in that regard, and you have already zoned it, general commercial, that possibly opens it up to auto body shop, small engine repair, I mean, anything that is loud and noisy, that is going to be pollution control, and frankly, that's not what I bought that property for. So, I'm asking you to please consider, when you vote for this proposal, to vote no. I've just given Adam an official letter from me stating I officially vote no, so he has that in his hand right now, and I would ask each of you to consider, would you, each one of you, really want this next door to your property? And with that, I'm going to close. Thank you so much for listening to me tonight. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I do something? I can't say anything. I just want to say, I mean...
Go ahead, Beth, come on back after.
Oh, okay.
The camera can see you.
Great, that's what I'm going for. Technically, the house is already there, so I'm just wanting to clean it up and make it look better. I don't, if I don't put it in Alva, I mean, it's a benefit for Alva and for the kids. I do understand we have the rec center, I mean, I won't fight with the city, and I don't want to fight with the neighbors either. I just felt like Alva could make a little money, we could make a little money, and seriously, for kids, I'm always, I think a birthday party building somewhere, if I don't do it in town, I'll do it in the country probably, but Alva does need a birthday party place other than, and I've, we've rented the rec center, we've rented the museum, I think they all have...
And the Runnymede.
And the Runnymede, we've rented them all. The Runnymede is really not a place for three-year-old birthday parties. The rec center works good for a couple of birthday parties, and when Alva's fails, we always go there because at least the three-year-olds, four-year-olds, two-year-olds can run and run amok. They're not going to do that in the Runnymede Hotel, nobody, I mean, it's just not appropriate for, in my mind. The churches, I mean, it's not, I didn't know you could call the churches and have a birthday party there. I'm just saying, it's a different, it's an idea for Alva, if Alva wants to grow, I mean, eventually, for example, I mean, Stillwater didn't start as big as it is now, but someday, somewhere, we're going to have to start letting people come in, and the zoning's going to have to outreach, even if it doesn't start with me. We're going to have to start letting some of these things happen. It's just going to have to happen, and I would, seriously, I get Janet's concern and, and the trash thing, I, I mean, I get a little trash on that lot, but I don't, I don't see the trash, and I don't know that we can blame all the trash on the kids of America and the high school kids. I, I mean, I think there's plenty of people well, old enough, that are throwing their trash out the window, and I don't think we can blame it all on the high school kids. Anyway, the house is already there. All we would be doing was cleaning it up, making it look better, so, anyway, that's where I'm... Thank you. You're welcome.
Other question?
Janet, can you, do you mind coming to show me here where your house is?
I'm just just to send it on to city council. They're the ones that have a lot of, they have, I just want to...
I believe she'll be just right there to the side. That's what I want. Is this right there on the back of, this is Beth, this is you right here? I think this is the alley.
Yeah.
There's the housing question here.
I think that, yeah. Okay, so this is you right here?
Yep.
And this is?
It's the old shoe.
Gotcha. Okay, so that part right there. Gotcha. Okay. Matt, here.
And you're, you're where, Janet, on this map?
Straight to the, straight to the...
This is Flynn, and this is the, and here's the pool. Circle, like, the circle.
This is me. That's the pool. This was just a storage, this is a closet.
Is that your pool?
Yes.
And it's all fenced in?
Yes.
That's another concern.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Well, that means, just, if they're parking on the street, then...
Data, from an inspector's standpoint, is there any, anything we need to know about?
The drive-through was my concern, because I'll have the extra, the drive-through in an hour.
Gotcha.
That would be my only thing if you did do a drive-through, where that would be at.
There's already a, there's already a, it's not on the alley. There's already a...
Where the curb doesn't go, where you drive right through the alley.
And I'm not saying we'd be able to do it, right, if we can.
Right, that would be the idea.
But I get it. I don't want to take up the alley space either.
Right.
Right. It's been a good long while since we addressed zoning changes in Alva. Was there anything on any of the previous plans that you're aware of that this might impact one way or the other?
No, no. I just know there for a while, we were trying to get away from pocket zones.
Right.
So, that's, that's why I'm like, we'll go these meetings.
Okay, that's what we need to hear. But we've got further down, further down 14th to the north is at least one business, correct?
Yeah.
Down, down Erich Lars.
Yeah, that was one of our pre-existing, it was a CEM, but we got rid of those, but...
Right. And then nothing else along this area of 14th Street that you're aware of is zoned commercially at the moment, correct?
Yeah, there isn't, so.
And is general commercial the most appropriate designation for what they're wanting to have?
Yeah, maybe it will be, yeah, because that allows them to be buttoned up next to residential.
Gotcha.
So, all the other ones are more heavy industry type zones, so.
We have birthday parties there.
I know, I've had a birthday party.
Do I have a motion from the committee, the commission, to move it forward?
So if there's no motion, stays in planning committee, no review from the city council?
It dies.
Okay. And if it is a no from the planning commission, does it still move forward to the city council? It seemed like there was at one point in time where we did one that came without recommendation and moved to the council for consideration.
I can ask group members, but I don't, I don't think it does if, if it doesn't recommend approval, I don't think it leaves the committee for the commission, but I can trust their group, but I don't think it does.
Maybe talking with city economics to see if we've gotten to a point with them yet where they're starting to kind of unearth some opportunity to see if this may fit into the theme they think.
Yep.
But let's just kind of kick in the can down the road.
Yeah.
See, they have to prove it and then the council votes it down and it dies.
Then I need a motion, sir.
Oh, I love the way you put that. I love the way you put that. OCD. Well, I like the motion, we approve it.
Okay, do I have a second?
Go ahead, I stuck mine out there. Tyler's way.
Yeah, we're just sending it down the line, aren't we?
Yeah.
I mean, I like the idea, just, you know, where you stop and who you say yes to, who you say no to, it's easy to just say no to everybody.
My stance. There's no temporary zoning that we can do for the current owners? And if it, if it sells?
I believe that once it's zoned, it's zoned until it is changed, it goes through the process.
Right.
Now, when you first started, you were talking about rezoning a lot of the host city. If that was, were to happen, would any of this be commercial or would that help any?
Well, whatever goes through planning commission here now, and at that point, we would stay commercial.
Right.
It's just some of the residential is what I need help with. And there are some areas like the homestead and the hospital, they're, they're zoned residential.
Right.
And they probably need to be commercial, so. But yeah, everything would stay commercial.
Commercial?
And it should stay there.
It just goes from zone 10 to zone 8 to zone 10s and all that.
Yeah, zone 8s and 10s, get those straightened out.
I remember working on that when I was on the board.
There's more, there's more zone 6s than there is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, it depends on where you live, there's a majority of zone 8s everywhere. And 6s are here and there, didn't miss. At least according to the math that Myers Engineering wrote.
We started this one back before COVID hit.
Yeah, longer before COVID hit.
That's when they fed us pizza.
Yeah, that was a, that was an insurance nightmare.
Now, just in general discussion, I will say this, it's not a bad point that the pool is an amenity and an attraction, you're going to draw a population down there. Having some commercial business that could feed off of what we're trying to do for the pool is probably not a bad idea. I just don't know if that fits in with what the progress that was made and has been since paused was in line with commercially, and if, again, with our consultants that we brought in, one of the talks was kind of pausing everything until we can get through that process to see what they recommend.
Well, go on down the road a little ways, they're going up the road. It's not just the pool, you've got a softball field and a baseball field that during the summer is used tremendously.
I can see every joint done extremely well.
Baseball boys don't want that to happen because they do their own, but the softball, you know, it could be other things besides just the pool.
Right. The trash unfortunately, I think, is an issue that we all deal with.
You just have to pick it up.
I live just up the road on 13th Street and we find trash from every takeout joint in Alva in our yard on occasion, just depends on which way the wind blows. Noise pollution, I think, is a fair point, but you also live in an area where there are, at least during the season, basketball games with loud music and big crowds that go on until 10:00 or 10:30 at night, pretty regularly throughout the course of the week, and then when we get into the summer season, you've got softball, baseball, you've got to practice, you've got tournaments, and that tends to drag on. I don't necessarily know that a coffee shop would add to or detract from anything that's already in that area. My only hesitation tonight is that I think it might be wise for the city to continue with city economics and develop a little bit more of a plan before we decide what this looks like. Was your timeframe immediate?
Yeah.
So you guys are ready to break dirt and get started?
I'm ready to go. I want to be going by the time the polls open. I mean, it's just going to be to the city's benefit, but like I said, I won't fight with the city. If they don't want to do it, then, but I don't, I'm, I'm going to do something somewhere. I, whether I do it within the city limits or not is, and I don't mean that in a bad way.
No, I understand where you're coming from.
It's just mean, I'm not getting any younger.
What if you raise an issue of taxes? If I'm not mistaken, all the property taxes are taken care of through county, correct? So that wouldn't be an issue for the city, that's a, that's a county thing. How that would affect it, I think, anytime somebody develops property in your area, your property typically goes up in value, which is a good thing. If you get your homestead exemption, you're capped at how much that can raise your property tax on annual basis anyway, and right now they seem to just go up in perpetuity, so I don't know that we're really without that much there. I'm really just hung on the idea that we've hired a consultant to come in and kind of help lay out some direction, and I'm not sure, but I want to act until we get through that process.
I'll tell you on that, though, I'm not convinced that that consultant, I haven't talked to him last week at the Southern Conference, I don't think he's thinking about small mom and pop.
He's not doing something on this scale, but if there were a larger plan that kind of helped direct that, I think those conversations might be needed. That's just my idea, though.
Shelley, are you having a, are you hiring someone to help you with the plans and all the?
If, if we get zoned, we'll get it, we'll hire somebody, yes.
And what if they say it's not going to be beneficial to you? Then you just stop it or?
Well, I won't start it.
Yeah.
I mean, what do you mean, if they say it's not going to be?
Yeah, you know, but economic wise, if it's.
She's saying, do you have a consulting firm?
No, I, no, I'm all in, one way or the other, here or somewhere else. That's just how I do it, you know, if it didn't work out, it didn't work out. It's going to work out, but I just thought it would look really nice across from the pool, so if not, it can just stay ugly. You know, I mean, I hate saying it, but I can't pull my money everywhere, you know, it's perfect for a pumpkin patch.
So I haven't shut you down.
Yep, I did. Get your shovel.
We'll talk tomorrow.
Forget we said the pumpkin patch. I've already ordered my seeds and they've already come in, so you can't, yeah.
2.6. Yeah. Well, I guess from my standpoint, in delay, you're right, you never know how long it's going to take. I, I don't want to stand in the way of, of business opportunity coming to the city. I'll second Charles' motion.
Okay. Murrow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Cornell?
I'm going to vote no. For the very reason that I was in on the very first part of the zoning and rezoning and we put a lot of time into that, and it's not that I don't want it to happen by any means, but I know the work and what we put into it and the craziness that, so.
But I, I think this is an opportunity for the city council to do time, whether or not it's time to take that.
Exactly.
If they've got a plan that they want to put forward and some things they want to get started on, they can simply say.
Actually, now we just put it on city council.
There you go.
Well, that's what we did. Moved to the city council.
OCD, though, we got this one over. I'll be there on my, my address. That's what we need to do at once.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, you got two other items in there, six and seven.
Oh, any remarks or inquiries by the commission members? I thought you all done all the talking you wanted to do, sorry.
Thank you for the careful consideration and debate that we got to have on this, I think it's important. Thank you too for bringing concerns to us. I understand where you're coming from and just think I'd like to see the process play out a little further, see what the next step looks like. Thank you.
And they'll be notified when it's going to be presented to the city council?
Yeah.
And so then you?
Well, we'll make sure, Shelley, and everybody knows, when the city council meeting is the third Monday of the month at 6:30 PM.
Except it's Tuesday next month.
Is it? Is it another holiday? So it'll be Tuesday next month?
President's Day.
President's Day, that's right.
Can I say something right fast?
Actually, remarks and inquiries by citizens is next, so yes, you have two minutes.
Oh, I was just going to say, we're kind of going to partner up with the Ingrams too. I mean, it's not just me, but Cheyenne and her husband's kind of wanting to take a new venture too, so.
So do we have a recourse to file a formal complaint to be considered by the city council? And then it goes to a vote?
I don't necessarily know whether it would be considered a formal complaint, but I believe that you do have the opportunity to put your thoughts on the matter on record by submitting a letter to Steve that he can put in the council's packet or whatever.
And then be at the city council meeting? Be at the city council meeting? Don't have one set about?
Would it be considered that the next city council meeting?
That would be to who? Steve Ford?
Yes.
Or you can run through Adam if you got his contact, contact number.
I just gave him the letter.
Okay.
Thank you.
The Jefferson will be on the 18th at 6:30.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Would it be considered that the next city council meeting?
That would be to who? Steve Ford?
Yes.
Or you can run through Adam if you got his contact, contact number.
I just gave him the letter.
Okay.
Thank you.
The Jefferson will be on the 18th at 6:30.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay.